I'm going to call to order this work session for October 20th, 2021. And the first item is ordinance 2021 dash 45. Ms. Beerman, good morning.
Yeah, I'd like the opportunity to share screen here. I could. Right, hopefully that worked for you all. And you can see the agenda item here. Okay, um, so this is Worms Way Lot A rezon request. This is a zoning map amendment to rezone a 6.65 acre property in section 28 of Washington Township located at 7850 North Port Road from agricultural rural reserves to light industrial. There's our phone. And this is the ordinance 2021 dash 45. Basically just repeating what we're requesting here and there was one condition of approval which was to submit recorded written commitment presented to the plan commission or as presented to the plan commission with the additional language that any proposed change of use must be approved by the health department to confirm septic system capacity because we don't have access to sewer at the site for the proposal. And I will say that as an update, just a few days ago, staff did receive a recorded written commitment. That will be included in the formal work or the formal session packet when you see that next. And I do have it available if you want me to put it up on screen here in a bit. And I may do that here at the end of my presentation. But just to get you familiar.
Just so you know, that's what's on screen right now is the commitment.
It is. Oh goodness. Let me, um, I'm going to stop share and re do that. Sorry.
It's okay.
If you could make it a little bit bigger, I might be able to read it.
Okay, now are you seeing me scroll through agendas? Okay, so sorry. Well, then you got a glimpse of the ordinance there or the written commitment. So, um, all right, so here's the official ordinance that we're looking at now. And the plan commission is they did forward on October 5th, a positive recommendation with a vote of seven to zero for this rezone. This is the packet and I'll just get you familiar with a few components within it. There are a lot of exhibits. Several of those six seventy, I believe, were in response to the plan review committee sessions and some of the questions that came up during that. Ultimately, staff did recommend denial for this and a lot of that is based upon the findings that our comprehensive plan does not support this type of reason and set of uses. And that's basically because this comprehensive plan was approved back in 2012, which was prior to the I-69 corridor, prior to that whole sample road interchange. And it is possible that maybe we need to readdress this area and update our comprehensive plan to look at a few of these properties in this area. And especially this one has such a business feel to it already. And I can get into that a little bit later, but it, again, a summary of the plan commission meeting, the two plan review committee meetings that it did go to. And then basically background, one thing I want to note is that this is the old former Worms Way site. That was, I think, went out of business maybe five or six years ago. They were in 1995 granted a special exception to have this agribusiness greenhouse type use, which at the time was not within our ordinance. And when the county adopted in 1997, you know, this, our new zoning map and zoning ordinance, like this site just sort of was left in this agriculture rural reserve zoning. Then we have this very, you know, commercial feeling lot that was built up as a result of this special exception. Also in 2019, we had a use variance go before the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow metal fabrication here. And for one reason or another, that petitioner chose to not purchase the property and begin their and relocate their business there from the city of Bloomington. We had a use determination that was submitted. It's an exhibit in here, but basically that stated that staff felt that what they were proposing on this site was a multi-use. And because that multi-use component, it was not an available option to ask for a use variance through the Board of Zoning Appeals. We felt it more appropriate for them to ask for a rezone to one of these zones here that would include that multi-use called Business or Industrial Center. And they chose to go with Light Industrial as their proposal. There's a little bit of analysis that staff did on the use transition between these two zones. And the gold boxes here within this table, each one of these areas is where that multi-use type component you can pull from. So the Business or Industrial Center allows you to choose 67 different uses that you can kind of move interchangeably and switch out at that facility. And I have a different table that kind of depicts this better. And the written commitments, I will say that we'll look at in a moment here. Those do reduce the amount of uses in the light industrial zone and also reduces the amount of uses that are interchangeable within that Business or Industrial Center. So again, here's our location, pause here on the zoning map. This is the Agrol Reserve Zone. We have some estate residential here to the north and east. And this is Windsor Private Subdivision, which was, I think, existing prior to Worms Way going in there. They do have, this is a platted common area that is wooded, that kind of buffers the site. And I will point out that Worms Way, that Lot B is not a part of this petition. It will still remain Agrol Reserve zoning.
Can you enlarge that a little bit, please?
I could, yeah.
Thank you.
And, um, you know, we've got Oliver Winery, Oliver Wine Company up here. We have that interesting auto salvage yard over here as well, just to kind of put it in perspective of what else is in the area. These are the site conditions for the site. Again, you can see there's that wooded area that buffer. We also have, um, you know, the, this, this large building here. I don't think they're wanting to make a lot of changes, though if this rezone goes through, they will be required to submit a site plan amendment where we will be reviewing all parking standards, landscaping standards, septic, just making sure that they meet all of our current standards that are a part of that process of review. And the slope map was included. We, highway department and the stormwater department both felt like this rezone was a reasonable request. It was not going to impact either of them, like those departments directly. I have some photos in here of the old Worms Way site. This tree is no longer here. It kind of delineated a cemetery. I think it didn't survive maybe some of the improvements of this road. Bio retention is already on site. We are going to reassess that, make sure it's in working order and sufficient to capture that parking runoff and then some of these areas. So here's the comprehensive plan information and basically there was nothing green I could support for this rural residential designation here. And again, since the 2012 comp plan, we've had I-69 updated. We've got the sample interchange updated. Perhaps we should relook at this area. You know, as a future conference of plan. The findings of factor here, some of, there are some updates from when they were submitting written commitments. And then getting into some of the exhibits, you've got the petitioner's letter, which you'll want to read through. Their site plan. This is the Agrol Reserve table of uses that are permitted or conditional within the zone. We also have the Light Industrial Table and in this one, I included parking standards because there was a discussion about that at one point in our plan review committee meeting. The red boxes are categories that capture that multi-use component where they do allow for multi-use interchangeably for business and business, personal services, retail, wholesale, trade, manufacturing and mining. Those are all defined within the definition of Business or Industrial Center, which is what they will want to be asking for during their site plan amendment. The use determination is included in here on how staff came to our conclusions. We also have a four page petitioner's response letter to a plan review committee meeting discussion because of, because this act, this site is only has access to septic system. There were concerns about the, you know, the industrial component of some of the uses that they are wanting to do here and how that would be, you know, that water like kind of processing would be incorporated into those activities here and you know, this, you might want to read through this, but basically I think a lot of, if there's any water runoff from or water that's used within this industrial activities, they basically get taken off site to be processed at a sewer or a septic, sorry, at a wastewater treatment plant that's to able to accommodate that type of water system. And then also the director submitted some more discussion about septic versus sewer that can be read through and how it's hard for staff sometimes to just look at a site during a rezone and say, you know, make a judgment call on if, if a sewer or septic would be required. It basically depends on the intensity of the use and how many employees they're going to have. And the intensification of that property in that sense. We have our pre-design. We did mention to them that a PUD was maybe a possibility, though that's more complicated. And we do have some remonstrance letters. There were, I believe, 11 in total. So we had nine that made it into the packet. And then I did add two additional ones that were presented to the plan commission. Most of these people, I think all of these neighbors are from the Windsor Private neighborhood. There are a few duplicates, some people just reiterating after hearing some of the meetings that they still are, you know, opposed. And then we have those written commitments. That was a draft within here, but I'm going to include the actual recorded version. And then I want to include this table or at least point this table out, which is exhibit 11. And this is where staff took the written commitments that were in draft form and we went through and kind of looked at each of these uses that they were proposing to not have permitted in a light industrial zone, should this be rezoned. And so heavy machinery use, taxidermy, kennel. Yes, these are actually struck out now. It was a point of discussion, but those are also not going to be a permitted use should this rezone be approved. And just a small analysis that staff did was in the LI zone, there are about 80 uses. I did remove some of these duplicate historic depth reuse and accessory use because they were not relevant in this case. So in this table, you see 80 uses with their written commitments. They're removing 16. So that'll be 64 uses total that would be permitted in the ally zone here. And then the Business or Industrial Center currently like allows 57 uses. And they're going to be eliminating under those written commitments 10 uses. So only 47 would be able to be interchanged. And, you know, there are those two remaining letters of opposition I included here. And then I'm going to swing over the written commitments that you'll, these will be included in the packet next time where they list those uses that are not to be permitted. So those ones that were struck out on the table. And then also they have a few other commitments here under section four. So they have committed to a maximum of 25 employees at any given shift for the site. They have also said that they would combine all of the, you know, production work within the buildings and it's not to be outside of the buildings. And then again, per the plan commission's condition of approval, we have had them add that any proposed change of use must be approved by a health department to confirm that the septic system capacity is in, is in order there. And so they do have it, you know, signed and recorded and we'll have Dave Schilling, you know, just take one more final look at this before next, hopefully next week's meeting. So are there any questions regarding this document or any of the staff presentation?
My colleagues have any questions?
Yeah, Penny.
Will customers be coming to this site? And if so, what, what additional demand or pressure will that put on what's going on?
Great question. I think from what they're proposing as a use, I don't believe so. I believe it will just be their workforce, which will be fairly small at first. And if you read through their letter, they're hoping to expand. But again, like because there's that interchangeable component, there is the possibility that, you know, if this person does not purchase the property, then any of these uses are on the table. And so, you know, furniture sales could be, or I guess that's furniture manufacturing since it's under that component. I'm just looking to see what would maybe require, there are some retail, if they go back to fertilizer sales or a wholesale florist, garden center. Those are still permitted uses and you might still get the public coming to this site.
Well, watches and clocks if it's not manufacturing. I mean, just all kinds of stuff that I, when I look through there. Office equipment repair, somebody's got to bring that equipment in, you know, those kinds of things. So I just, I would like to know what kind of additional stress that might put on, whether it's a septic system or the, the water runoff from the parking lot, the number of parking spaces needed, those kinds of things.
So dur, if this rezone goes through, the next step is to do a site plan amendment review and staff reviews that for any change of use, basically. That would kind of fall into our definition of a change of use. And so we would be reviewing that before they could occupy the site with whatever use does go in here. I do think that the VJ company is, is interested in purchasing property still and going to do their more like in industrial component with just workers and wouldn't have a retail component. Might have some minor shipping of, of goods and services. But I don't think they're going to be scaling up really big on that component. So you'll want to read through some of their letters that they've included on, on the activities that they're hoping to do on the site for sure. But should the sale fail, then this would be back, you know, potentially on the market again and would be able to look at some of the uses within this table here. And I think that was maybe some of the, you know, some of the complaints that the neighbors had that this is, this rezone would allow such a wide array of of things to be able to go here. You know, just as they saw someone else who we thought was going to be purchasing the per, the property, they ended up not doing so. And so here it is still on the market. And rather than those Ag Rule Reserve uses here, we're switching to limited or light industrial uses. But they're, they're going to be somewhat limited due to the written commitments that are going to be posted here.
Commissioner Jones, do you have a comments or questions?
No, not at this time.
Um, I, um, so just to provide a little background here, um, without taking too much time, I the, this is another example where the comp comprehensive plan doesn't match the reality. And it's okay. The comprehensive plan is a guide. It doesn't mean that we have to do things this way. It's similarly to our consideration of the proposed development on Victor Pike a few weeks ago. So this is in the same vein. If these commitments are made, they stay with the property when they're sold. So the question is what commitments do we need to make sure are in place so that this property, the property owners adjacent are protected? Now, this property is never going to be, well, I guess it shouldn't say never. It's very unlikely this property will be used as a farm. It has Worms Way, retail space and warehousing garage in place. And that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to find a way to get this person's business idea up and running. And so we didn't think it was appropriate to require that it be used for either a residence or farming because it's past that, right? It's no longer, it's no longer being used in that way. Now it's sitting vacant, which I think is pretty horrible on its own, although it's being well taken care of. You know, that's, that's for now. So I think what I would ask my colleagues to do is to consider this not just as a petition for this specific petitioner, but to think about what they would not want to have going on, on this property in the future and get those things into a recorded commitment as well. So if you have, if you look at this list and compare it with the recorded commitment that's proposed or that's already in place, if there's additional, if there are additional activities, now's the time to say something. Not this moment, but before we hear this petition at our regular meeting. And in fact, if you can get it to that information to Ms. Beerman in advance, she can work with a petitioner before it comes to us. If there's anything else that you feel needs to be stricken from this list. I will say that I was pretty adamant about the septic inspections that if any use changed, that there would have to be a reinspection. And that's to protect all the neighbors and protect the whole county and the whole community really. And it's a real concern that this place is on a septic. And so for me, based on Commissioner Giffen's comments, I think it would be helpful to ask Ms. Beerman, the petitioner about retail wholesale, if that's something that Commissioner Giffens would want to, to have written off. I don't know about garden center because that's what it was. But any of the other items on there, Commissioner Giffens, I would ask that you have Ms. Beerman talk to the petitioner if you want to have additional items scratched. We also did not want to put this petitioner in a position where we said, okay, you can only do this one thing on this property because that's not fair and it's very difficult to sell property when there's no uses available as is evidenced by the current situation. So we were trying to be thoughtful about which uses would fit with what they're proposing and work through the list that way. I know this petitioner is in a hurry, so I don't know if my colleagues are willing to have this heard next week at our regular meeting. Ms. Beerman, do you know?
I had a question that if there was, if there was a change to this list, would that have to go back to the plan commission for approval?
Yes, well, not approval, but for review, yes.
So it would go back to the plan commission for review?
It would add more time.
Yeah, that's what I'm wanting to clarify.
I think it would. I would say Mr. Schilling or Mr. Wilson could probably tell us that. I know that if we as a board vote to approve something that the plan commission had voted down, that it goes back to the plan commission, but but maybe Mr. Wilson can chime in on that.
Yeah, let me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the statutory processes, if the commissioners amend the zoning ordinance, they could, they could approve it and amend it at the same time. And then it goes back to the plan commission for a hearing at the plan commission. If the plan commission approves, the amended ordinance is effective. So you don't have to go back again to the commissioners. So in effect, it shouldn't slow down it that much if you make an amendment. It would go back to the plan commission for a hearing. And upon their approval of the amendment, the ordinance would go into effect, amending the zoning map.
And if, and if the plan commission disapproves of the amendment, then it has to come back to the commissioners again, yes.
Yeah, if they amended it differently, again, it would go back to the plan commissioners or to the commissioners.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, with what you've just explained, Commissioner Thomas and the stuff about the septic, I can say right away, I think that the daycare facility should be struck because that would put a lot of extra stress on a septic system and a lot of extra people in and out all the time. Trying to find it on here. It's under public and semi-public. It's on the left hand.
It's in the top. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, daycare facility. Yeah.
And staff would, I mean, we would send it to the health department should that be the use that would go in place. And it might trigger an upgrade to the septic system possibly. We're, we haven't even gotten to the point where we have looked at the septic system. That usually falls under site plan review. So if it was a daycare facility, it would get, the septic would be reviewed and they would put in the proper capacity, I think.
And, and this roadway, I don't think, I don't think it's a huge issue in terms of the roadway, right? In terms of the ability of the roadway to carry traffic, because this is the frontage road that connects to sample by around about an I-69 right there. So, but I, is your concern Commissioner Giffens, then the parking, because that would also be reviewed if that was the use?
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Sure, sure. Okay. It's, it's hard to keep all that, sorry, started. Yeah.
But, but I'm, I'm happy to entertain, you know, if you have additional uses. I mean, you know, if you want to stick to that one or others.
I may be here that. Fall with, with Ms. Beerman in a day or so, just to go through the list and get better, better informed about it.
And yeah, and in chapter 802, all the definitions to these uses are there. I'm going to also point out that in chapter 802 are, is the list of special conditions that are required for each one of these. One thing I'm going to point out, well, it, that is something you'll want to look at to see maybe what special conditions could limit even some of these others. Like we do know that commercial or industrial adaptive reuse requires sewer. So we know this is actually just not a use that can be done here already. Not in this decade.
Yeah.
And I will want to note that if this does go back to the plan commission, that would be, I think, the November 16th meeting. And I wanted to ask also that if this comes back to the commissioners, I believe we would have to have a new recorded written commitment to present to you at that time. So, and I know there, that there, there is time is of the essence here. So they're wanting to kind of keep things moving along. I just wanted to kind of clarify the timeline and for when we set up next to come back to the commissioners meeting here.
Um, okay. So I would, I would ask, given that we heard from a lot of the neighbors and, and I understand their concerns, I would ask that the neighbors be provided with an updated condition letter, anyone who sent you an email, right? If you could send them back and say, look, this is what we're, this is what the commissioners are considering and here's the date of the meeting. I think that would be really helpful because I, I really want to know what they think about these revisions because a lot of the comments were made before these limitations were agreed to. And so I think it would only be fair to hear from them with this additional information in mind to see what their thoughts are.
Yes, and I sent them all the information for this meeting, basically stating that you, they may or may not have an opportunity to talk at this work session. And I do know that the petitioner's representative is here as well, Joe Myers. And I do know that the petitioner's representative is here as well, Joe Myers. So they have been trying to be as transparent as possible and sending them out as much information as possible regarding this case. And once we know when the next commissioners' meeting is set, I'll be forwarding that plus the written, the recorded written commitments that we currently have right now. And then based upon if Penny wants to see any more, you know, removed from the light industrial use, we can work with the petitioner on getting a new set of reported commitments and, and then take it to the Plan Commission for approval on November 7, 16, November 16.
Yeah. Anything else? We don't typically hear from commissioners unless there's a specific question for them. We certainly don't take public comment at our work session, because that's, there's a public hearing process. So I would invite folks back, or my colleagues have anything, any other specific questions now, or, or suggestions on when we can hear this at our regular session? Is next week okay?
Okay with me.
Commissioner Jones? Yeah, okay. All right, so let's go ahead and put this on our agenda for next week, if that's all right. And then in the meantime, I'd let my colleagues to contact you with additional questions or suggestions for, any additions to the commitments.
Probably by Thursday, late afternoon would be best. That way I can make sure it gets included in the agenda for your guys', for the meeting.
Oh, tomorrow?
Friday, yeah, I guess, yeah, tomorrow afternoon, we would want to work something out, because Friday noon is your deadline for us to, to get everything done.
Although you can amend the packet once, once it's in, so.
Okay.
So at least give the placeholder in, and, and that's a good start. Yeah, okay. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. My computer's not working. I know we have Mr. Wilson next. 2021-43, Chapter 801 revisions, amendments, sorry?
Yeah, I'm sure my camera's working here. Oh, I see. Just a second. I've got the camera reversed. That may not be better.
That's much better.
Okay, the, the, before you is ordinance number 204143, which is Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance text in Monroe County to Chapter 801 and Chapter 807, which are the definitions in Chapter 807 are, is our sign ordinance. These are substantial revisions to both chapters, and they are basically designed to address recent decisions in the federal courts regarding the, what is allowable as content for signs. All these cases rise out of a case, Supreme Court case called Reed versus the town of Gilbert, that basically said government cannot make a distinction based upon content between signs. In that case, they prohibited signs for a church announcing the location of services at various residences, but allowed yard signs for commercial purposes, for contractors. They allowed yard signs for political candidates and so on. And so what this does is basically, our intent here is to address both Reed versus Gilbert and also the number of cases that are in the second wave, which actually we are a part of. We have a case currently pending in federal court in the Southern District of Indiana in regard to a digital billboard that was denied a use variance by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so to address this next wave, what we are proposing to do is really scrub our ordinance of any reference to sign content. The legal constitutional, constitutionally ways you can regulate signs are size, lighting, location, height, but you cannot control the message. And so what this ordinance does is we've gone through and made the changes, and in the draft version I submitted you, I've highlighted it, and let me see if I can share on my big computer here. Okay, I think it's working now. Can you see it? Yep, okay. This is the ordinance. I'm just going to scroll through this, and I'm not going to go into a lot of details. I do want to focus in on one particular area, and that is temporary signs, because that was the basis of the Reed case. And it's also, I think, where we get the most concerns because of political advertising. And if you'll, I've included the entire definitions, because it just is an easier way of making amendments. But as you can see, we're eliminating commercial message. In effect, if you have to look at the sign and read it, it's maybe constitutionally improper. And that's not necessarily what the Reed case is, but it's what current cases that are coming out of the federal courts. And we're, there's no need for us to bend regularly content, so we've just decided to get rid of it in references to signs. And let's go back. Mostly it'll come up, signs. Okay, for example, we can do changeable copy. All these things are, are appropriate. But as you can see on an incidental sign, we basically struck the language that refers to a commercial message, because you have to read the sign to discover whether it's a commercial message, off premises or on premises, you have to read the sign. So, or at least it's argued you have to read the sign. So that's the theme. We've looked at these and tried to remove any reference that we require a interpretation of, of the language of the sign. And going to our sign ordinance, we have prohibited billboards in Monroe County since the early 90s. And we haven't had any. And so rather than referring to them as off premises advertising, we have sufficient line standards that prevent pole signs of a certain height. We have site limitation. The requested billboard was basically 20 times the amount of sign area we allow in Monroe County. So that, we have plenty of ways to constitutionally regulate the sign. So again, what we're doing, the highlighted area is, I won't try to go all through all this in particular today, are highlighted in yellow. I do want to focus on exemptions, because that's what the Reed case went, went for, and that's what the example we were in the federal court were dealing with. okay, here we go. There's our current exemptions. Sculptures, which does not have, basically, we actually got dinged on that as far as in the federal court initially, summary judgment said that was improper, because you have to look at to see whether incorporates advertising or identification. So what we've done is we've changed the temporary signs to basically clarify that it doesn't matter whether they're commercial or not. Every lot gets basically eight square feet of temporary signs, which is basically three or four yard signs, depending on the sign. And I've done an informal survey driving around the county. Very few people have yard signs in your yard outside of the political system. And the political signs are controlled by state statute, which prohibit any regulation of political signs during a period before and after an election period. So we cannot even enforce on any sign anyway. So there's no reason not to just say, okay, everybody gets their freedom of speech to have eight square feet of signage on their individual zoning lot. And the other things are all, as you can see, based upon eliminating that provision, but there won't be any more regulation of signs as far as what's permitted or not. All signs are permitted if they're temporary, which means they're on wire or a temporary stamp. And, and we've also, at the bottom of this 807, we had a provision that allowed relocation of outdoor advertising signs. I think this was primarily to do, to deal with situations where right of way was widened and extended, and in part to deal with I-69 that would allow a company to relocate a sign if it was taken as part of a road project. We've checked with highway, they don't have any road projects in the foreseeable future that would impact outdoor advertising signs. So we've decided to eliminate this feature, this provision totally, just to clarify. And as a result of leaving that feature, we go, we have to go down, and we're going to remove these other illustrations, which seem to apply, that our ordinance would allow billboards. And this was only to clarify what would occur if there was a relocation. So we're eliminating those illustrations. Again, it's fairly complicated from the standpoint that we're making a lot of changes. But again, the purpose is to avoid any future litigation in regard to these signs. We still have full ability to deal with a case where somebody has a sign in a driveway, somebody has a sign in the right of way, they put a sign on the roof, a roof. We recently did an enforcement case where we required compliance with the ordinance to move signs out of the right of way and off of a utility pole. And so those are all constitutionally enforceable. So I don't think we're going to be using, losing any of our enforcement. We don't go around and read signs anyway. So it just makes the ordinance constitutional, we think. Again, let me issue this caveat. The cases around the United States are all over the place in regard to signs. We don't know exactly how the Supreme Court's going to address this. There is this sign case that's headed that way, and so we should have more guidance in the next year as to what, or what is not permissible in our sign ordinance. And we'll probably need to update it again at that time. Again, if you have any questions, be, be now, and the time goes to a hearing before you, let me know, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that come up.
My colleagues have questions right now? Not right now. Should we go ahead and put this on our agenda for next week?
That would be great for us, sooner we get it on the books.
There's a, yeah, we really do need to move forward. Are my colleagues okay with that? No, yeah, no objection. Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and get this on our agenda for next week.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Wilson. All right. So next we have a couple of agenda items from Ms. Purdy. And we have ARPA policy, American Rescue Plan dollars, act dollars, and a support letter for Indiana Railroad. Do you want to do the ARPA first?
Most certainly. Okay. The ARPA policy that, trying to get this pulled up for me here. Back in May of this year, the Board of Commissioners created an ordinance that established a fund in which the federal government can deposit the federal dollars that have been distributed nationally to counties, cities, municipalities, to assist in the response to COVID-19. And as part of that original ordinance, we, the, it was required that that ordinance include language that's, that references a plan. And that the plan is how, in fact, these dollars will be used, and, excuse me, and they have to ensure that they actually comply with the conditions set forth by the federal government regarding the, the use of the funds. And so the funds, the, the use of the funds is restricted. It's not, we don't get to just carte blanche, use them however you want. And so there's the proposal for this policy is everyone pretty much agrees on the number of the, the areas that the, the Board of Commissioners and Council, who's responsible for appropriating the funds, is, is interested in, excuse me. And we want to get this policy to you, because we have two items that do meet the criteria for the use of these dollars. And the policy and the ordinance, both of those things can be changed as long as it complies with the conditions set forth by the federal government. So I want to outline the two items that are currently agreed upon by, for the most part, the Board of Commissioners and, and County Council. And that is revenue replacement and the housing first, which was a letter of support I brought to you guys in the formal session, actually, already. So for the public's purpose, this policy is a living and breathing document, but it's required in order to allow the council to actually appropriate funds should the projects come forward. So we already, as I said, we have two items that we definitely know that we want to be able to use, revenue replacement and the Housing and Security Initiative, just for the purpose of education for the public, some other areas that have been identified as a priority for review for the potential use of our funding. Funding is respond to negative impacts caused by COVID-19 emergency, particularly funding as it relates to community gaps demonstrated in criminal justice study recently conducted by the county. And so that leads directly to the Criminal Justice Response Committee that you guys created, Public Works Infrastructural Needs, including funding for additional maintenance of roadways, especially repaving and stormwater projects. See, also, the county has applied for grants for approximately $6 million in stormwater projects, and granting agency indicated that it would prefer that the matching funds actually be from ARPA funds. Support for public transportation, respond to the negative impacts caused by COVID-19, particularly in support of local working families, including childcare. Respond to negative impacts caused by the COVID-19 to support the other population. Also to support public health initiatives and including mental health. Support for the tourism industry and capital improvements of the current convention center. Expand broadband services, I believe someone mentioned that earlier at the, at the formal meeting. And incentives for, to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. And one of the other things was funding for assistance to first responders, law enforcement, health providers, teachers, things of that nature. So those are all items that are approved for the use of ARPA funding. But again, this policy is to just get this started and allow council, should they, should they approve projects, look at the revenue replacement and the housing insecurity.
Support. Mike, Mike, thank you, Ms. Purdy. My colleagues have any questions?
No, I don't.
Do you have a comment?
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, this morning, at the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation meeting, they were talking about how tourism is down in this area. And so I hope we can find ways to help bring some of that back with the ARPA money. And so I hope we can find ways to help bring some of that back with the ARPA money as economic development kinds of things and the replacement or stuff. That's just my own personal view on that.
And I will note that we did not receive funding from the stormwater grant that's on our list. However, because Ms. Ridge is so resourceful, she's also working with the state. So that may still happen, but we did not. And the funding amounts were really small. I think, I think one of the local counties that got funding, I think they got $18,000 toward a, toward a multi, yeah. It was not, the amount of money was insufficient from the state as well. So, okay. So do, what do we need to do at this point? Do we need to take a vote on this to move it forward?
Excuse me, I don't know that you have to, but you certainly could and that it's to be modified at the next formal meeting.
Okay. Is there any urgency to actually taking a vote today?
I don't think so.
Yeah, let's just put it on the agenda for next week. Yeah. How about that? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the clock. It's already 12:30. I know. We have so many things to do today. Okay, so we'll just bring it to the regular meeting on next week, if you would. Okay. And then you have the item for Indiana Railroad. That would be great.
Yes. So this is a letter of support, excuse me, for the Indiana Railroad. Application for a 2021 Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Grant. The project that is titled Wabash Valley Milk Bridges Project, that's the Indiana Railroad's project name, calls for replacing half century old timber bridges in southeastern Illinois and southwestern Indiana with modern concrete structures as a railroad transitions from coal hauling carrier to an environmentally friendly and agricultural conveyor belt. So this is just a letter of support. It does indicate that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners would contribute up to $1,500 towards project if the grant is awarded. So if this is some, something that you are supportive of, we can probably, this would be another one that might be best to.
I think you're in a hurry for this.
Yeah. I think that might be the case.
I don't think we should wait. And it is a, and it is proposal to provide money if the grant is approved. So, and I wanted to see if my colleagues are, have any objection to proceeding with getting that signature done and moving forward with this letter.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay. So yeah, we need to do a motion and I'm trying to open my documents. My gosh, it's so.
I could maybe help.
That would be good because my computer's slow right now.
No problem. This would be a motion on the approval of a letter of support for funding up to $1,500 toward a project by the Indiana Railroad. And it's a grant application. So it's letter of support to be, sorry, I lost where I was going.
That's okay. Can somebody go ahead and say so moved? All second, just for clarity sake, all second. Does anybody have public comment on this specific item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or star nine. Hey. All right, seeing none, Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on approval of the letter of support?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gissetts?
Yes.
Motion is approved 3-0. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. We still have an agenda item left. I don't know if there's anything new since we did have a meeting this week on the election board request for space. If there's some new information, we can hear that now.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here. I just wanted to raise a couple of questions and you know, actions coming out of Monday, as well as just questions that we can address as time goes on. So I guess what I did this morning was to, you know, again, sound the alarm about some of the risks that we face, both the ones that we know of today and the ones perhaps coming down the pike as our state legislature comes into session and moves to most probably restrict both voting rights as well as other constitutional rights like reproductive autonomy. So I think also, you know, we've discussed how although Clerk Brown has presented what I think is quite a simple solution to expanding voter access in 2022 and beyond, the issues involved are actually quite complex. So I think it would benefit everyone to hear the commissioners explain where you are on the proposal. I think, you know, we all share an interest in clarity and accountability. And just as some explanation, as I noted earlier and as well in the last couple of weeks, my perception after Monday's meeting was that after all the work involved and after all of the outpouring of support we've seen from our voters and their explanations of how they have been and could be in the future impacted by lack of expansion, that the ball had not really moved far at all. So again, you know, we talked about some shuffling around and consolidation of space. And I made the analogy earlier of a child moving their food around their plate to make it look like they'd eaten when in fact they hadn't, or perhaps just nibbled at it. And I think we also saw what we perceived as some backtracking on some of the commitments we thought we had heard directly from the commissioners in these public meetings. So again, you know, what we're talking about here is a fundamental constitutional right, something that I think our voting public quite properly, I think, does not see simply as a line item on a budget, but something that matters in a very different way to them. So I also wanted to speak a little bit about their perceptions about the Democratic Party that I think we have an opportunity to address all of us here as well as going forward. So as we've, you know, as we all know and have discussed in many different contexts, the Democratic Party faces several challenges in retaining the support of young people and others. And at the same time, we know that while extremists in this country are repeatedly disregarding constitutional rights as well as important norms and practices, anti-democracy extremists are doing everything in their power to take down the Constitution and its protections. So while that is going on, young people, I think, are really looking for action from the Democratic Party and are disappointed and turned away by what looks like failures to act or take seriously the challenges that we face, or even to be outmaneuvered by opponents. Or if it looks like the party and the people that do actually have the Constitution on its side are taking that for granted. And it's not just younger voters. We know that older voters especially are looking to move away from the inflammatory behavior and disrespect that characterized the Trump administration. So I think we're really at a critical moment for both, you know, the big D Democratic Party as well as small D democracy. So in light of all of the above, I wanted to make the request that you clarify where you are with Clerk Brown's proposal. And that in addition, if you're proposing alternative plans, and again, plans, I haven't heard an indication about the availability of bipartisan support, but that would be helpful as well to know. But when you're proposing alternative ideas or plans, that you also share what the plans are to seek public input on, as well as expert opinion on the feasibility of these proposals and how these proposals will affect access to the ballot for the people in Monroe County who face multiple and different barriers to access. So thank you. I'll end there since I know we're short on time.
Thank you for being both a guest in the morning and the afternoon. We appreciate it. Awesome. Okay. So good. So, so we are, I believe, so we do have a meeting coming up again. We haven't set the date yet, so we're waiting on a few more responses from the working group. And I look forward to those continued conversations as I'm sure my colleagues do as well. And and we do appreciate that. So do we have other items for our agenda from my colleagues? Are we good with our agenda items? Okay. So I just want to note that we still would like to receive the plan that Mr. Turner talked about in September at the election board meeting. We still have not received that. And I would encourage the public to engage with the election board and with the party leadership to ensure that there's more than one location available for early voting because no matter what, putting everybody into one building to early vote is really difficult and it does not make voting accessible, especially early voting accessible for folks who don't live or work in Bloomington. And there are folks who, who are out in the rural areas who would appreciate the opportunity to vote early. So please contact your party chair. And let the election board know you're interested as well and support that. That's going to be really important. And so with that, we are going to be adjourned and we look forward to being able to announce soon the meeting time for the next working group meeting with the election board and the Board of Commissioners. All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.